This starts.
Okay. Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting, March 7th. People around the room, if anyone can introduce themselves.
Brian Colesley, Teton County Commissioner.
I'm Erling Jewell. I manage Greenfield's irrigation district. I also chair the Sun River Watershed Group, and I serve on the Tri-County Water District Board.
Kerry Haddig, rural resident.
Melody Bonanson, Shoredoak County.
Paula Jackinetti, clerk and recorder.
Clifton Greeley, resident.
I'm Tracy Went, Sun River Watershed Group.
Joe Dowdell, county commissioner.
And I'm Sam Pross, county commissioner. So, first thing that we have on our agenda, our submitts. Minutes of February 15th.
Did you read these? All two, three, there's written.
Okay, all seconds. Do you have further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you're being... One for Jennifer Lee. Energy. Jennifer Lee, this one has been... Signed by an attorney.
I would move to approve the...
What's the address on it?
Sure.
Yeah.
For an approach chart. For an approach chart.
Yeah. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have one for... Northwestern Energy. This is to install a gas main. And... Fifteen... I don't know what it is. Who is that name?
Jess Grandor. This first road southeast.
Yeah.
It's just across from a gas main. I would move to approve that.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Had Alan signed off on that one, Joe?
Did Alan sign that one?
Yes, he did.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
We have a task order for the Sanitarian.
Yeah, we've got a... It's the first one I've ever done, another task order, but it's for the Sanitarian. The state is moving towards these task orders as we discussed before. It's for... I think it's in the back there. It's for... Basically, it approves the state to pay their portion of what our Sanitarian does.
Right.
So I would move to approve that task order.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Is there an amount, Sam?
Is there one?
Is there an amount?
Well, no, I don't see one.
Yeah, it's in the back. I think it's in the back. And then, of course, this is another one of those documents signed deals that...
Yeah, this was a... But there isn't a...
I can just get a copy of that afterwards, guys.
Sure, we can do that. Yeah, because this doesn't have a...
It does.
Yeah, I know, but it doesn't have a dollar on it.
Can we run through it real quick?
Sure.
Consideration of payments, the department will pay the contract up to a total of $9,000 based on terms outlined in attachment A scope of work.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
I think I interrupted you. I don't think so.
Yeah, you moved on. Seconded it in. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. I couldn't see that thing. Okay, then we have a muddy creek bridge resolution. And this is...
It's the resolution for the off-system bridge replacement on Muddy Creek out by...
I guess it's...
No, it's farther east. It's east of the highway. It's by Dan and Jackie Reese.
Oh, okay.
Going south where the road crosses the Muddy Creek. It's been in the pipeline for about three years. This is the resolution. I think the plan is that they will do that this summer. Or next summer, depending on their funding. But it's with the state off-system bridge program. The DOT.
And they'll replace that bridge.
I would move to pass that resolution.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a greater lease resolution. And this has all kinds of attachments and...
As for the three graders that we bought nearly two years ago, we finally got the graders. Because of supply chain issues. I would move to approve that greater lease resolution.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
And now, if you want, to have a light reading.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
I'll circle back with you.
And then we have a letter of support from our office to Montana Connect Program through Three Rivers. And it's a... "Teton County Commissioners are proud to support the grant application for the Three Rivers Communications USDA Reconnect Program in rural Teton County." This will be in the Dutton area. Expands fiber access to fiber optic internet connection for rural Montana. It's critical to the citizens. So, we'll get that signed and send off to them. Your pleasure there, John.
I move to write that letter of support.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then we have a list of surplus equipment and materials that we will advertise and sell. And I won't read it all right now, but everyone's welcome to take a look at this.
So I would move to declare that equipment surplus.
Okay, and I'll second. SRWG report.
We need to blow out that door.
What's that?
Blow out the surplus.
Oh. Okay, all in favor of the surplus?
Aye.
Aye. And what's the...
SRWG report?
Yeah.
That's me.
Oh, there you are. Okay. Excuse me. I was looking for a document in my file here, but, okay.
I brought it in with me. I didn't send it to you.
Oh, okay.
And I have more copies. I had no idea this was such a hot event, or I would have brought a lot of copies. I only brought a few, so...
Tracy, can I have some of your copies?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And then there will be a couple more. So I'm Tracy Went with the Sun River Watershed Group. For those who don't know me, we work... We're based out of Great Falls, and we work along the Sun River from Gibson Reservoir down to where the sun meets the Missouri, and we work on everything from water quality to weed control to water management. So I just have a little report, and I have copies for each of the commissioners, but then also a few extras if folks want them. Basically, I just want to go over some high points of stuff that we're working on. We have a tour coming up this fall with the Montana Watershed Coordination Council. That'll be open to the public, and we'll have something on our website and go out and email for folks that want to reserve their spot. But this year's our 30th anniversary of existing and serving the watershed. And it's also MWCC's anniversary, their 10th anniversary of serving the state of Montana. So we're doing this tour September 18th through 20th. Folks will come out. They'll get to see some of our completed projects. They'll get a tour of different issues that we deal with and get to meet some of our partners. So that will be, I think it'll be a good time. We're going to be at the Wild Wings event. I noticed it's hot. We'll be at the Wild Wings event later this month. We also do a Freeze Out, a cleanup at Freeze Out, which is a volunteer event made for... So volunteers will come out and help clean up after, you know, all the birding and hunting and stuff is done and before the summer tourist season starts. So that's been a fun event. This is our third year doing that. This is our 20th year collecting water quality data, and that starts in April and goes through October. We have one person that heads that up, but then we also have volunteers come out and help every month. So if that's something that interests anybody, you want to see what we do every month, get ahold of me. I've got some cards if you don't have my number, and you can sign up to volunteer for that. Stream gauges, we're still trying to figure out how to get that stream gauge on Muddy Creek resolved, the one that got shot up last year. I think I came and talked to you guys about that a little bit. So we've been working, we, you know, there's no leads as to who did it, but we still need to replace it and get it going. And then we also have our Water Management Working Group that meets and talks about water management across the whole basin. That next meeting is April 18th at 10:00 a.m., and that's at the Fairfield Ambulance Center. That's there by GID. This year, with so little snow in the mountains, I think that could be a really interesting meeting. We have someone coming from the statewide drought monitor to go give an update and talk about how they establish drought status across the state. You know, you see that map every year that's got the yellow and the red and all of the... Or every month, they release a new one or every week or so. And so how do they make those changes and what dictates that? They're going to explain that to us a little bit. Our project on Muddy Creek is kind of on hold waiting for... Well, we're doing some early planning and pre-permitting stuff, but we're still waiting for one of our grants to get contracted. Funds have been promised, but we don't, they haven't signed on the dotted line that it's officially ours yet. Another thing I wanted to mention to you guys is we're doing a bear aware workshop. We were talking about grizzlies a little bit before the meeting started. May 16th out in Fairfield at the ambulance center. We're going to have Fish, Wildlife and Parks come and talk to people about how to avoid conflict with grizzlies when you're recreating, how to keep them out of your grain, off your... How to avoid attracting them to your ranch and your farm and all of that. It's a really good presentation. We've done it with Chad and Ally a few times. That'll be at 6:00 p.m. May 16th in Fairfield there. And that's all our big stuff. We're going to do the Weed Whacker Rodeo as usual, second Saturday in July, and a bunch of other stuff between now and then, so... I think I hit all our big stuff.
All right. Thank you.
Look, you're working with Ally from the local bear smart group?
Yeah.
And, I'm sorry, one more question. On the Muddy Creek restoration on the gauge, since we're currently going through our flood type stuff, that's held up because of funding, or what is, why is the reason for repair for it?
Replacing the vandalized gauge?
Yep.
Yeah, it's just money.
Okay.
We got money to install it initially.
And less than a year later, we have to replace it because it was shot up. So DNRC and USGS and Bureau of Reclamation all have bits and pieces that we're hoping we can cobble together and get it reinstalled in April. But we also need to update the satling cluckware on all our gauges, so it's like, do we wait until we have the money to replace all of that and just do it all at once? Or do we have the gauge for a little bit, knowing that it has to be updated, so...
And what is your current accumulated funds for that, and what is still remaining?
We have very little accumulated so far. In fact, usually we get a little bit of money from the commissioners here, and I forgot to bring you guys an official request for that, so I'll have to email it to you.
Okay.
But we have, we have maybe a couple thousand dollars set aside for it. But again, hopefully, we'll be able to get most of it cobbled together from our partners.
And what's the total?
Parts donations. On the spot, I want to say the total to replace it was around $10,000, between 10 and 11. And this is the gauge that's on 13th lane. I always figured it's 13th or 14th lane. It's 13th, isn't it? There by the bridge, by the wildlife area there.
Okay. And have you guys approached USGS for any...
They don't really help fund seasonal gauges like that because they have their own gauge network. They're very supportive when we need parts or expertise, and they have it available, but they don't really have a funding program for that because they've got their own network to fund.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's another gauge further downstream on Muddy Creek, closer to Vaughn. That is a USGS gauge, but that one is funded by GID and DNRC, so... Yeah, I mean, USGS, they help out. They provide technical assistance, but they don't have a lot of excess money to keep the gauges going.
We do have some money we get every year from BLM. That helps with our stream gauge network and helps with our water quality monitoring. And last year, we didn't need to, or so far this fiscal year, we haven't needed to use all of that, so some of that will roll into helping replace this gauge. But we're also looking to apply for some more funding that would help upgrade all the gauges and then fill in any missing pieces on that upper muddy gauge. That one, I think, is kind of important because it's right below the town of Power, and it's like, it's kind of before the majority of the water dumps in from irrigation returns. So it's, it's like, this is what the water would be like if it wasn't for return flows. And then the one at the bottom is like, this is the cumulative effect of all the return flows, so...
Yeah, it's kind of...
So we need it both, really.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Tracy. Okay. Erling, do you have anything to add to that?
With respect to Sun River Watershed Group report, I would just continue to say how much the organization appreciates the county's annual contributions to our efforts.
Thank you. Commission reports. We did do, had a walkthrough with contractors for the new building, the health building and ambulance building on the 5th, and the bids, we'll be taking bids for that building until the 19th of March. And so a few contractors came out and had a chance to look at the site. And plans were presented to them, and they'll be able to look those over and get back. So hopefully, we'll get things rolling with that pretty quickly. And that's about all I had. Joe, did you have anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Public comments? Yeah.
Hi, Clifton Greeley. I'm visiting you again. I was here last, during our last meeting, and I had started an internal review of the road department. And I submitted for record a letter to the commissioners stating my findings.
Yeah, you brought this in this morning.
Correct.
Yeah, appreciate your input. It's a... You've obviously spent a good deal of time on this.
It was a...
Yeah, okay.
It was interesting.
I want to read it a little closer. I've, you know, I've blazed through it earlier, but I'll...
So I wanted to submit these as well. These are some observations, and then also it's a printout of the Staley... I think I said that correctly.
Staley.
Staley. They currently are providing help with writing grants for this particular recommendation for adding GIS for the road department.
Oh, okay.
To be able to track and record maintenance that takes place as well as...
Is that with the city of Belgrade?
So that's, that's an example.
Right.
That they completed. That was on their website.
Oh, okay.
And they explain further in depth, I think it's on the second page, on what they, what they offer as far as that service, but there's a bunch of other things too.
Oh, okay.
So there is other money available besides the budget. And that's what started my review after coming to you as commissioners, having issues with climbing snow on our rural roads. My kids' school bus got stuck. And I kept being told that funding is limited, and there's a lot of issues with getting guys overtime and funds not being available, money not available, so I did a review, past four years budget. And all that's in, in the report.
Okay. Well, we'll have some time to look that over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments?
I'll give you a little update from GID.
Okay.
First, with respect to our water availability, Gibson is sitting at about 65% of normal. And I shouldn't say Gibson. I should say our snowpack above Gibson is sitting at about 65% of normal. And March and April tend to be our snowy months, but it's hard to catch up when these are traditionally snowy months, and you're going to be extra snowy months to catch up. So bottom line is, we could be entering the irrigation season with with some limitations. And what that translates to is that we'll probably turn off much earlier than normal, which translates into all the wells for Fairfield Power, Tri-County Water District, all the kind of wells on the bench will probably begin their seasonal drawdown weeks to normal, you know, ahead of normal, which the following spring then becomes problematic for those wells because they'll be at very low levels next spring. So I know a lot of the producers are making insurance plans and strategies and crop changes and trying to anticipate the less than normal water here, so... So just letting you guys know of that.
Thank you. Yeah.
And then give you an update on the Fishkin Supply Canal Road. That is a, that is a public road. The reclamation declared it a public road. The Federal Highway Administration recognizes it as a public road. GID Board of Commissioners passed a resolution defending the rights, the public's right to use that road. So the only people who, you know, and there's several state and federal agencies like BLM and State Fish, Wildlife and Parks, they all assume that it's a public road because they promote recreational facilities on that road for the public to use. So there's only one group remaining that doesn't recognize it as a public road, but that's okay.
Oh, sure.
And then as far as Arnold Cooley goes, that's our hydroelectric project. We are in the final stages of satisfying BLM's mitigation that they would like for us to cross their land with a portion of our, of our transition line. So, I mean, it was never really a question about whether the easement would be granted. It was just, we were always wrestling with the level of mitigation that was being requested. So we are, we hope to begin the foundation block and the construction of the powerhouse this spring. So we're getting ready to get going on there. The Sun River Bridge Project, as you know, Appreciate Commissioner Carlson was there during our open house in Augusta. He was half of the public that showed up. I guess there was, everybody else was satisfied with the documents that were available online, so we sat there for two hours and only two people showed up, but...
Well, I thought for sure people would come after.
I know. We had like cookies and everything, you know, I thought that would bring them in. But anyway, so it was all good, and it's, it's pretty much a requirement of the final legal process that you have a final public... In the first open house was much better than last year's. And so the project, the status of the project is this. We will go out for bids this fall. We're doing 70% design review on the new bridge. Go out for contractor bids this fall, construction early next spring, and it'll be done in fall of 2025. So it is moving forward. The only other remaining hiccup was the status of the existing bridge, the old tired, worn-out bridge. Initially, that was listed as a historical asset, and therefore it had to be decoupled from the new project in order for the new project to go forward. So we're navigating the process to get that old bridge delisted so we can safely remove it before it falls into the river. And then we would be compelled to remove it, so it's a little ironic. It's not going to stay there for very much longer, truthfully, so it's better to try and get it removed under this current project.
Right.
And then, just to give you a heads up, we will be celebrating our 100-year anniversary next year, and so we're, we're planning a lot of big celebrations for it. I mean, we've been delivering water for over 100 years, but the district was formed in 1925, so we're already starting to plan our celebrations.
Nice.
And you guys are...
Okay.
Any questions for GID?
Where's that bridge located?
It's just downstream of Diversion Downs. Just, just as you enter into the national forest, there's a bridge across the Sun River.
If the Gibson... What's the name of the bridge?
Well, it's, we call it the Sun River Bridge. It's, it's the road that, the bridge that you cross to follow the Fishkin Supply Canal Road. So it's just inside the natural forest, certain boundaries, across the Sun River. Yeah, here, so that was the border on...
So what is your plan right now with keeping the bridge in existence?
Well, because in the, in the 1980s, there was an effort to put a lot of these government structures on the federal registry for historical significance. And so it has a protective status. So initially, we were going to remove the bridge as we built the new bridge, but the, but having a part of the new bridge delays the new construction because the process to get the old bridge removed from that protective list is a little more burdensome. So we decouple the two parts of the project so we can move forward with building the new bridge.
So you can still build without removing the electric?
That's correct. But we still would like to get the project, the bridge removed, under the current project because of the money that's available. I mean, GID, Reclamation obtained $2 million in grants, and GID covered the difference of $17 million. So the bridge is, is going to fall in the river one of these days, and that's why there's just a sense of urgency to get this new bridge in place. So it's, it'll have to be documented. There'll be pictures. There'll be a lot of history on the construction and everything that remains over the years. But then eventually, it'll have to be dismantled and disposed of properly.
So which of the bridge originally was put in there, do you know?
Nineteen fourteen, something like that. Nineteen sixteen, that timeframe. And it's what's called a fractured critical bridge, which means today we, we build redundancy into those structures, so something happens. The whole thing doesn't collapse, but in those days, if you take out one member, it transfers all of the other, those stresses to the remaining members. And a hundred years of, of wear and tear, those, those members would not be able to carry that load. And so that's why it's, like I say, there's, there's, it's not getting better with time and it's kind of fixing itself, so. We just want to get it disposed of before it ends up in the river. And, and we definitely don't want people traveling across it any longer than, than, than is necessary.
All right, well, thanks, Sarah.
Sure.
Appreciate your input. Okay, anyone else have a?
Is there anything coming forward on the bridge up on the Teton?
Oh, on the historic bridge?
Yeah.
We haven't heard, had any, any comments or anything lately, so I don't know.
We did reapply after we, with your application on the original procedure. And we were, we didn't make the cut, so.
Tried.
Yeah, we tried, but they haven't had any other board.
Yeah, but it's a competitive deal through flat, we did not make the cut.
Through what?
Fender Lance Access Program.
Oh, okay.
So we're doing nothing until we reapply.
It's still grousable.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. For some vehicles. And a lot of it's a little too narrow for a lot of things, but, yeah.
Keeps the river up, though.
It would, don't we? All right. Anything further? Well, thank you all for coming out today, appreciate your input. And I'll do.
Ten thirty-three?
Ten thirty-three, okay, thank you.